Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order.
So I just remind me to say that dude, I had this amazing presentation.
Do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first item on business is accepted to the agenda. More motion please.
Mike.
Second, sorry, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Agenda is accepted. Next item is the consent agenda, which is resolution zero two four twenty twenty five, approving the items on the consent agenda. Motion? Second.
Just.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I'd just like to point out the appointment of Dana Woodson as the transportation assistant slash bus driver. Unbeknownst to us, as Dana's interested in being the transportation director, transportation assistant is not considered in line to be the transportation director. And being a transportation assistant does not qualify you to take the transportation director test for civil service. I kid you not. Oh my God. I kid you not. So this is the same exact position, but if we are able to label it as transportation assistant slash bus driver, which she in fact has her license to drive buses, it is a requirement of her position to be able to drive for us, she will now qualify in order to take the test.
So this is simply a title change?
It is simply a title change without any change in responsibilities so that now she qualifies to take the civil service if she can.
Did we not have a conversation about civil service, name again into the other times?
Yes.
Right? Okay.
That's, that's, that's really interesting. I wondered why. I figured there was a reason, but that, that even after we...
That's why.
Yeah.
Anything else on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Really quickly.
Yes.
Went to South Africa with Natalie.
Yes.
She's incredible. So I'm really happy to see her. That's it.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. I believe we asked if people want to address the board tonight, so we'll just go over the public session rules and then we'll turn it over to those folks. The Board of Education encourages public participation on school-related matters at board meetings. The board is here to listen during this period of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the board should state their name and/or organization. We usually grant around three minutes to each speaker. Speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. The board cannot permit public session discussions to involve individual district personnel or students, so please don't use the names of any of our students or staff. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel should present their comments and/or concerns to the board through a written statement. The public session is not generally a Q and A period. We're here to listen. The board will not address specific questions or respond to specific concerns from the public at tonight's meeting. Persons with specific questions should address those to Mrs. Diane Fox, Superintendent Schools. And the board president shows they're the right to discontinue any public comments which violates his powers. Okay, who would like to speak first? Anyone?
I'll go.
Perfect.
Hi, everyone. I am Andrea Armstrong. Most people call me Anne. I come to you as a parent of two Petrova Elementary students. And first off, I want to thank you all for your service to the district and the important decisions that you make. I am here to voice concerns over the elimination of the Petrova Elementary library program. Last week, I shared a letter with many of you, co-signed by 11 other parents regarding this matter. To my knowledge, the library program has seen a decline over the last two, prior to school years in terms of funding and resources. And now the program has been reduced to a book exchange only. I'm thankful to the faculty and staff who have dedicated their time to keep the library program alive in this transition period. But I think it's safe to say that the educational experience of our students is not the same as it would be if a certified trained librarian was in that position. A strong elementary library program teaches the skills that our students need today. Information literacy, selecting sources, finding out what interests them in this world. I think we all use information literacy every time we look at our phones to decide what is credible, what is information we want to draw on. And those are skills that we get at a very young age. Using the library as a space is also a skill and an important habit that, that we would like to see students continue well into middle and high school and into their post-secondary educations. I ask the board to consider restoring library services for this year or if not, fully for next year with a certified librarian in place. Thank you.
So it's interesting to know, we will be discussing this under old business later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Because sometimes after public comments, people, we out the door. Anyone else? Okay, so stick around, we're gonna talk about it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is our financial report.
Everything is saved on the shared drive. And this week, there are very few transfers. Nothing is over $10,000, but wanted to present it to you anyway. So that's all I have for the resolution.
Okay, so resolution number zero two six twenty twenty five, approving the current budgetary transfer report as presented by the school business executive. Motion on the resolution, please.
Tori.
Second.
Joe.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to old business. Resolution number zero two seven twenty twenty five, approving the updated facility use form. Let's get it on the, on the floor and then we'll discuss it. Motion please.
Aye.
Second. Discussion. Anyone have any discussion on this? We talked about it last time. Like Diane made some other changes that were asked for.
Are you happy with it?
Yes.
So I think I'll restate what was stated last time on this. There is quite a bit of discretion on the school's side for how we allow our facilities to be used. Because like someone asked if you fill this out at all, well, that's not exactly the only thing. So I think I'll just point that out, that there is discretion on how any of our facilities are used. Correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Thank you for your work on that, Diane.
I'm gonna have to request on your desk tomorrow.
I already have soccer and football. You'll be number three. So here we go. It's all good.
Capital project update?
I really don't have anything specific. We're chipping away at the last pieces of all of the projects. We are back and forth on some additional work here at the field. Not sure where that will land. We're in the thumb wrestling stages right now.
Did the school board speaker sound system guys come up?
They have not been here yet.
Just wonder what they found.
What's going on with the pickleball courts? Is that happening?
The answer is maybe.
Okay.
The answer is maybe. So we, we have some things, we had to look at how cold it is and the quality of the tarmac that we could receive at this time of the year, who's actually, whose plants are up and running, what highway departments already have their hands on it, how far it would come from. So the question became, when was the closeout of the project? Is this something we could put off till the spring? Because we won't need it over the winter anyways. And so we just got that answer earlier this week. And now the question really is what the cost will look like. So this is always the spot where I sit back and watch the emails go over my desk because they want $500,000 to do the $50,000 project. And then we volley back and forth and back and forth. So we're in the volleying stages right now of what that will look like. We have some options. It actually is not in as bad a thought, a shape as we thought it would be at the end of the, the rest of the project. We could actually do a top coat and then paint it. So, because the pickleball courts will fit on there in the size that it currently is. Our concern was also that the, that the slope between the new tarmac and the, the space was going to be so significant that it wouldn't be ADA compliant. If we wanted to put some sort of a concession at the end, people wouldn't be able to get to it. But actually, the slope is more of a slope out towards the field, but as you come back in towards the parking lot, there's really very little slope at all. So it's, it would be ADA compliant, which we didn't think was gonna happen. So, so we're really gonna look at what that cost would be. At most, we would just top coat it with an inch and then bring it right down to match the other. Or if we can agree on a price, then we'll, we'll just top it to seal it and then paint it.
Yeah, the steel coat would freshen it up and then use paint lines.
Using the slabs.
Yeah, and use the slabs that's already out there. So, so the pickleball courts are coming. I'm not quite sure what they'll finally look like. The top coat would preserve it to last a lot longer, right? That would really make it new again and it would have a much longer life. So that's all to be determined.
Anything else on project, capital projects?
Present.
Perfect. Okay, next item, I do see is elementary library sciences.
So Betsy came and talked to us last week, last meeting, and Anne, thank you for being here tonight. I do completely understand. I've read your letters and in fact, Jake from the library also sent a letter that if you haven't seen yet, is in your, in your inbox for today. It's the core of the library media specialist. And I, I think Anne, when you said that what's going on in our libraries now is not the same as what would be going on in the libraries if we had a library media specialist in there, that is absolutely true. I can't question that. I do think that we have pretty robust libraries here. Interestingly, I did send you all a, an article that was in the Times Union yesterday about libraries and what's happening all over the state with school libraries. And one of the quotes was, well, a few, a few racks of books does count as a library. Doesn't that need to be a room and a space? So it's just very interesting what the perspectives are on libraries. Where our libraries have all been redone in our last part of the project, brought up, brought up just now. So they do play a role in keeping, helping our students with curiosity, research skills, all of a reading. And we know that that's fundamental to learning. When our elementary librarian retired, when, when Lori hit the road in her RV, we didn't fill it the first year, but the, the following year, she, she retired mid-year. The following year, we filled the position with a very experienced elementary education teacher. Not the same, but still she came with a lot of experience. She wanted the role, she asked for it. She came to us and wanted to fill that role. And she took it seriously and provided our students with strong and meaningful learning experience. She did a really nice job. This year, however, as we entered an extremely tight budget cycle, staff reductions were unavoidable. We know we had significant staff reductions. And one of my guiding beliefs is that you can do anything, you can't do everything. So we had to make some difficult decisions about how to sustain core instruction and student support within the financial limits that we had. And we moved that teacher. She had been an AIS teacher. We looked at our priorities, our, our student needs, and we moved her back into an AIS role and out of the library. So we do...
Can you just explain AIS as for folks?
Academic, academic, I'm sorry, academic intervention services. So she works with small groups of students who are struggling to meet state standards. Yes. So we, we do have a full-time aide in that library. There's also a full-time aide at Bloomingdale. So both libraries are staffed with an aide. They do have book exchange. They are open for teachers to use, bring their kids to the library and use that space. But we did not fill the library media specialist position this year. Another reason for that was that I, I also often say I don't hire to fire. Everybody says, oh, one year is fine until you get to May and that person then is without a position. And we are busy right now with our facilities planning, looking at what reorganization might look like for next year and future years. So we do have a full-time technology integration specialist who works primarily at the elementary level, not completely, but the majority of his time is spent with elementary students and teachers. And he does provide instruction, research, digital leadership, try that again, digital citizenship, and safe technology use. So a lot of the information that would be part of that LMC, we are delivering in a different way as far as the ability to be savvy on your phone. Middle school also has done a lot of work on that and provides direct instruction.
Does he push it into classes?
He pushes it into classes, yes.
What's up?
Not, not on a, not on a rotation like a special where you do it once every six days, but teachers invite him in. Sometimes he trains the teacher to be able to deliver the lesson. There's a lot of different ways. Sometimes the teachers want him to come and actually deliver the lesson so they can watch it and feel comfortable with it. So he delivers it in different ways, but...
Is that a full-time position?
Full-time.
Okay.
It's full-time and he's busy.
Yeah.
Well utilized.
Sure.
So as we look at the possible configuration changes, we could see some realigning of our staffing. We could see a change in the number of libraries that we utilize coming for the future years. And I, I know that we have people here tonight who are talking with us about library, but we've had people who have talked to us about home and careers in the high school that we don't offer home and careers. We've had people concerned that in this world of computer literacy, we don't offer computer classes, direct computer classes. Health education in the high school right now is being taught by our world language teacher rather than a health teacher. So we, and we used to have literacy and math coaches at the elementary level that we don't currently have. So everybody has their passion and not that one is better than the other, but in the current state and federal realities and the funding that we're looking at going forward, we're not going to see an increase in what we're receiving in aid. So unfortunately, we're gonna be making some decisions moving forward in prioritizing sort of what we've got. So I think I, I say back to Betsy and to Anne and the people who signed it, you have done the right thing in that you brought this to the table in front of the board so that when we're making decisions for next full year and everybody's coming with their priority list, your priority has made the list. You beat the rush, so it'll give them some time to think about it and reflect on it as we go forward. So our goal remains the same, right? Our goal is always to be student-focused and provide as many opportunities as we can. And we can, we continue to try to do that even in our realities that who knew last year we'd be looking at this year for time moving forward? So that's, that's a little history of our, of our library time.
Well, it's definitely something that we should be putting into our facility use committee.
So I was gonna say, like, we won't be talking at some point, programming, right?
Correct.
And so whether, whether we are closing schools, keeping schools open, going away from the middle school model to a junior center, whatever that ends up being, at some point in that committee work, we do have to talk program because that'll be hand-in-hand with everything. And I would guess this is certainly an item that would be in that discussion.
Yeah. But is that, can you remind everybody, including myself, the state regulations around this?
Sure. So the state requires a librarian for a high school. And the actual full-time equivalent, we call them FTEs, is based on the number of students in the high school. So our, our minimal state requirement is that we have a half-time librarian in the high school. There's no requirements around librarians at any other level.
What do we have at the high school?
So we have a full-time librarian and a full-time teaching assistant in the library. We have a full-time librarian and a full-time aide at the middle school.
And then just two aides, one each elementary school.
Correct.
At the elementary one.
Correct.
And even with Bloomingdale structured just K two, there's still a full-time aide?
It's, it's one of those things where, like, how would her day really be?
Why would she split with doing different things?
Yes. I hear what you're saying and we did talk about that. But at, at some point, the value of driving in, now we have lunch periods, it just, it didn't, it didn't seem worth the, was it the juice isn't worth the squeeze to split her between buildings? Yes.
I had a few questions. You kind of addressed them all. You know, I, back in 2010, 11, I was, somebody was on maternity leave and I got to work as the library media specialist at Petrova for half a year. And I had a, I had a library aide. I wasn't licensed in it, but I had a library aide, fellow interview, most of you may know.
Yes.
And so I saw kind of the power of that position. It was great. I loved it. I mean, I thought about not leaving, going back to school and doing that, but I didn't. I had a few questions. You kind of addressed, you kind of went over the history of how we got to this point. And it sounds like you're saying that some of the ways you're trying to address learning gaps, Joe, the technology integration specialist. And as far as facilities use to study, so, you know, we've been talking about that for years, obviously, and we're pressing. So I guess one of my questions is, to what extent could we resolve the library issue? Like, how tied, how tied in is the library media specialist or any other positions folks might want, home at whatever, into facility usage? And like, is there a way that were we to wrap that up sooner than later? I'm not rushing, I'm just curious, like, how, it sounds like we can't make decisions on stuff like this until we wrap up that facility use study. And I'm curious how realistic we think someone on that subcommittee, it is that we could make a change for next year. I know we don't know. I know it's evolving, but it seems to me like we're in this place where some of the financial limitations are beyond us, federal, state. I still think a lot of folks don't understand how limiting they are. But a big reason for doing the facility study and possibly reconfiguring is we're, we're afraid of losing programming and that's happened in multiple areas. So I guess I'm just curious for us to discuss a little bit about like how, how realistic it is we could wrap that up this year and make a change for next year. Not that I'm saying we need to, I'm just curious how realistic is that? And I missed the last two meetings, so I didn't get all the updates.
So I think, you know, we've just barely begun, right?
Yeah.
So we'll know better a little bit down the road, but it's, it's a huge task. And my guess is that when we come out the other side, there's gonna be a lot of good ideas about how we can restructure and how we choose to restructure will directly impact the staffing needs that we have, whether we're adding, deleting, staying the same. Potentially could be adding in some areas and deleting in others.
Sure.
And then staffing obviously will impact curriculum and offerings and...
Is there a, is there a date, this like, do we have kind of like a, once we cross this timeline, we don't have enough time to make a change for next year or is that still evolving? Like, is like, if we don't know by...
No, we're not there yet. Josh Dan spoke on that at the last meeting.
I thought I saw it.
Pretty eloquently and, you know, we just barely begun putting some structure to it. Our next meeting, we're gonna finalize some structure and, and, you know, get a blueprint headed forward and get our topics lined up and we'll have, you know, we may have to add meetings, I don't know.
Sure.
I'm in favor of adding meetings, but it accelerates it, but I'm just one member.
Sure. I mean, I, I think so. I mean, really, we're, right now, just looking at our agendas and what we want to discuss and everything else, we're at six months of meetings with all, to gather all the information together, right?
You mean you laid out six months of meetings?
Almost, yeah.
Okay.
So I mean, based on our talking, this meeting, what's coming up is when we will lay out all of that, you know what I mean? But based on all the topics we want to cover and the thoroughness of what we want to do, we're probably looking at six months of meetings before we've covered all of it.
Yeah, it sounds about right.
Right.
You know, this reorganization could be a phase in too. There might be a first year, second year, third year, or we don't know.
And just, like I'm saying, I'm not pushing at all.
Oh, we understand.
Just more like, you know, thinking about a new superintendent coming on next year as well and thinking about regardless, they're gonna be involved in, like, I just, I think it would be more dangerous for us than necessary maybe to have, to have no changes made next year if we don't phase in or do it completely and then have a new superintendent, have learning that and being involved in the restructuring and all that. I think entering, if you hire a new superintendent, we, and there's like, hey, here's the restructuring plan we're doing. And you're gonna be obviously part of that as opposed to, yeah, it just seems, that gives me pause.
Good luck.
I'm not, yeah, it just, I mean, and some of this is beyond our, we don't wanna rush it.
I think definitely after the next, our next facilities meeting, I definitely think it will have more answers for that. You know what I mean? At least have a better picture of where we're at.
Right.
Yeah.
It would be my feeling that we proceed with the committee work, the direction, and whoever gets hired as superintendent, we'll have to get up to speed.
Sure.
I don't think we can wait for that person for a year or whatever.
Right.
Something, I think this, this is, it is the most critical thing we're doing for the next decade. We gotta get that direction, that bus moving forward. And one place or another, super guys got to jump in, whether it's next fall or a year. And it could be a person who is not very familiar with our district and will need guidance anyways.
Right.
Could be.
I was just wondering, when we have, when we kind of have our idea with the births and birth rates and everything coming in, is it April, May that we kind of get kind of an idea for next year? I know we don't get the, the enrollments for pre-K and kindergarten that early, but do we have some idea based on birth rates at that point?
We've actually done UPK for so many years now that we have a pretty good handle on what next year's kindergarten class is going to look like. We have really good working relationships with all of the daycare providers.
Okay.
We have so many kids in UPK, so we can already, and we often ask them about what's coming. So we also know what the three-year-old population looks like because we want to know what's, we start early looking at the UPK sites. They have a whole process in order to apply to be a site. So we need some understanding of how many spaces we need moving forward. So we, that work is pretty ongoing. I see Katie shaking her head. They do quite a bit of work for us, she and Emily at Bloomingdale and then Erica.
It just gives us an idea, you know, if we look forward, what are, what are we looking at?
Right.
I think it's safe to say that, you know, this topic will, will make its way into our committee for discussion. It may be a discussion of, needs to get included under this model, or it may be part of, this is why this would be good, because we can do this.
So when, when do those, so is that, thank you for that question, Tori. Is that generally when the staffing conversations start to happen, around next year?
They start...
Or are they already starting?
December.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I'm thinking, I'm sensitive to the point about not hiring to fire somebody and I, I think that's a wise move. You don't want to set somebody up who's like moving your buying house, starting a career and then seal it, right? Are there, and I guess, like, I hear all this conversation around like the long-term planning and I think that's all good conversation, but it doesn't really satisfy the kind of like immediate and like midterm need for this position? Are there ways that, is there any slack in the system or are there ways that we can get creative with the community about this position in ways that we do otherwise? Like doesn't, Aronak Foundation has an early reading program, if I remember correctly, I may not be remembering correctly, but is that the kind of thing where there might be temporary creativity where we could build something with the community? I, I don't know the answer to that, but, but I, I just wonder like, is there a creative solution here that's like a short, medium-term fix until we know what we're doing with the rest of the stuff? Because I, like, I was reading that article that you sent from the Times Union and it's, and if you haven't read it, board members and in the, in the community, it's, one of the points it makes is that there is like really serious state aid issues here. And so like, we don't get reimbursed very much for library services. And the districts that suffer the most with this exact problem are rural and urban under resource districts. And so you have a kind of like statewide inequity that goes on in school districts. And I think that's something that needs remediation, right? Like, we talk about diversity, equity and inclusion and providing equitable services to people. Is there a way that we can get creative around that, either with current staffing or with some sort of public partnership? I don't, I just asked that question. You look at, you were gonna jump in.
My train of thoughts in line with what you're talking about, Joe. Diane, if I may, just, Mark, it maybe it's you told me, what's the taxpayer contribution to the district in, in terms of like state aid and stuff like that?
About two-thirds.
Yeah, right. So it's like sixty-seven percent is coming out of the taxpayer pocket.
Correct.
For our district. And the state aid is about one-third then.
Approximately.
And the one-third is drying up. And then in health insurance is... And then in health insurance is exponentially going up. And so what was already a tight budget is, is just, I mean, significantly different at this point, right?
Correct.
And so if we were going to add any positions to the school district, this is really going to come out of the taxpayer's pocket at that point, right?
Correct.
I think I'm close.
Prohibited by the tax gap.
Well, so that's the other point though, right? We can only cap as far as we go unless we go to the community and we say, we need a lot more money. Because this is going to be like a little bit more. We're going to need, right? So I guess for me, part of, part of that complexity, along with facilities use and everything else, is really kind of saying to the community, what do you want to do? Because we can't do everything. And as much as I appreciate that, I think it's good points. And if I had the choice myself, I might do something different, but I don't. And I guess my point is, is like between now and whenever the decision's made, I would really like to hear from more than the fifteen people that we've heard from. So that we know what the community says is a priority or not. And I don't, I'm very grateful for those of you that showed up tonight and anyone that shows up. This is kind of the point though, right? Like, show up and show us what that priority is. So that would be something I would encourage the community members, everybody that's, is like, is, we got to prioritize stuff. So help us understand what's a priority. Fourteen or fifteen voices doesn't sway me very far. And that's just me talking and I mean no lumbered chair for disrespect, but like, that's where we are. We're at a point where it's either going to be the constituency is going to say, yeah, we want to spend more. Or they're going to get creative with us to find solutions. I mean, I, I appreciate what Jake is saying, but I've sat at a table where I've seen Jake's budget exponentially grow the last three years. Maybe Jake has a resource that he could offer locally, you know? Or someone like the Aronaks or something. But I, I really think like this might be something that if we want to do something sooner than later, we might need some partners. So it's not just cut the check and it goes.
Here's, here's the procedural issue that, that I have a problem with. All the items that, that have been left out of the budget, we've all valued. If we start adding things midstream, so if we say, well, we'll figure a way and we'll put this position in. Next week, the home and career skills groups are going to be in, right? When you did this, this is important too. Everything's important to somebody. And, and we make these decisions for a year plan and then reevaluate, evaluate every year. If we start doing this stuff midstream, every constituency that wants something that was left out is going to want the same thing. And where do we say, no, your thing's not important, but yours is? We've recognized these losses are critical and important. To your point, we're trying to spend the money the best way we can. And, and these decisions are going to get more heightened next year.
When we got the initial report a couple of years ago, we, everybody went around all the different community groups and said, hey, this is not good. And we tried to get that message out. I think, to your point, Zach, around kind of like communication with the community, I still grow frustrated with people who think that like, we built the turf field, we cut a bunch of academics, you know, that I think we need to get. However, we can get our message out better about like where our priorities are in terms of education. And I agree, Mark, like there's all these different buckets that we couldn't fill. And people just understanding that like the turf field had nothing to do any of that, like.
So I get asked that frequently, and here's how I explain it to people. When you're doing your household budget, right? And your checking account is short to pay some bills and you go to the savings account and you draw it over. You can use your money anywhere you want, right? In municipal funding, in school funding, that's not true. Our savings accounts are by topics and must by law be used within those topics. So we can't just take from here to cover that.
So that's one of my points is I feel like we, and we've said that in many meetings, but it doesn't get, we don't have enough people attending to hear that. We don't get coverage in the paper that reports that. And to Zach's point, and Joe was about like community, like I don't know if it's time for like a letter from the board, the super to the community to say, hey, like, let's clear up some, we're all hearing the same misconceptions around town. First of all, about the money for the turf field. Second of all, about the, you know, the toxic issue, which is not an issue. That's the most state-of-the-art field you could imagine. I think addressing some of those concerns would like then get people ready to think about, okay, I'm not hyped up about that anymore. Because I know that's not true, the stuff I was hearing about turf. And now like a letter, soliciting feedback on this, like, I don't know how to do it. We've been talking about it for years. But like getting the community to talk to us more. And it's not always realistic. It's like someone to come to a meeting or watch on YouTube, I get that. But just if people truly understood, those village boards understand maybe a little bit more after we spoke to them. But I still have this sense that community at large doesn't fully grasp what we're facing in terms of budget cuts and what the implications are.
So we will be holding some public hearings with our subcommittee.
Okay.
And there'll be ample opportunity to weigh in on all these issues because guess what? The reorganization will include everything, curriculum, facilities, staffing, programming.
So can we blast that like message about, can we like blast out a message on, on both like parent square? Which has all people who have kids in the district, but then some other medium too to get. Because people say, well, I didn't hear about that. I didn't know about that. And so how do we reach everyone that we can to say, hey, here's opportunities to come and talk to us?
Tori?
I've actually been to two seminars on this and I spoke about it last year twice. In that many other districts larger than us, they have media specialists that help. They're basically PR people. Now, obviously, the smaller districts can't afford to have a full-time PR person. But one of the things that the Rural School Boards Association, now that I'm with the Center for Independent Living, I'm finding is the Rural Center for Independent Living Association is working on, is teaching school boards how to be more open. Now, the average person in public does not know how a school board works. It doesn't know our purviews. It doesn't know that we get zero dollars. We do not get paid. It doesn't know how it works. I still have people, and I know we've argued about this. I still have people who rent in the Village of Serenach Lake that think that they can't vote because they rent, don't vote. This is a common thing. It's not something to laugh about. It's something really serious. And one of the things that I have said after both of the seminars that I went to was, we need to be doing, we need to be educating the public. And I, that, that was where everyone disagreed with me, but we need to be educating the public. We need to have something in the paper once a month, not reactionary, so that when people do come out, thank you for coming out. Because we don't get people to come out. We get people that are, that run into us in the grocery store and say, hey, I'm worried about this, but you guys took the time to come here. You wrote letters, you got signatures, and you've taken the time to talk to us. And you can see it's actually getting discussion. The thing is, we need to be proactive about this. I've been saying this for two years now. Once a month, we need to talk to the paper and we need to say, look, we want to set up something once a month where we have a topic. Okay, maybe, maybe in April, the topic is who can vote on the school board elections? And who can vote on the budget? Well, there's nine thousand people that can vote on our, those things every year. And the year of the turf field, we had fourteen hundred?
I think so.
Around fourteen hundred. The rest of the time, it's five or six hundred people that vote on these things. And it's not always, yes, some people don't care, but there's a lot of people out there that don't. So when we come to these issues, we need to tell people, this is, these are the constraints that we have. I got on the school board, ready to fight the world and we're going to accomplish all of this. And I spent the first year going, oh my God, if I read anymore, I'm going to lose my mind. And every time you think you get a grasp on the acronyms and how much you don't know, at the end of that year, it's overwhelming how much you don't know. So how can we possibly expect every, all our community members to understand all of this stuff? If we're only drilling on a reactionary basis? Turf field came out, we, we responded to, we tried to be proactive, we responded to a lot of things. We talked about closing Bloomingdale a few years ago and there's a hubbub and we talk about it and then it goes quiet again. Whereas if we start dealing with these issues that are only going to get more complicated, like, you know, staff is seventy-five percent of our budget. You know, what does that mean? You know, maybe next month we explain, okay. Go in, have an article that's in deep, in detail, have it on the newspapers, have it on Facebook, have it on parent square. Find all the places that we can get. Go to the Alex Club, go to the Moose Club, go to all these local organizations that want to help. But maybe if we explain it to them, that's that many more people that understand. But it has to be proactive. We've got to stop being reactionary. And I've got two seminars worth of PowerPoints, contacts and resources that I will share again on this topic. And then we aren't so much dealing with individual issues. We want you to come. Please keep coming. Please keep talking to us. Because people don't want to. And the fact of the matter is, a lot of people come here, they go away, they don't know what else they can do. They're one little people. Maybe you all didn't know that everybody else in your group existed. But once it gets going, you find out there's more people. And the other thing that I'm finding, last month has been a major eye-opener for me, is we are going to have to be more creative. We are going to have to use things like mentors. We are going to have to work with volunteers. We are going to have to, because it's the only way we're going to keep these things running.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's, thank you for that, Tori, and I agree on the need to be more proactive. And how to do that with scarce resources. And I, I agree with you, Justin. I don't think the community quite understands the funding crisis.
Definitely not.
The, the hostility that the federal government has had towards New York State. And also then the, the way in which that is, and really, I mean, health insurance costs next year are going to have, are going to force a lot of issues around conversations with the community around how taxes and things like that. And so coming down the pipe, I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to think out loud around like, there are longer-term conversations to be had around structure and staffing and programming. Are there creative solutions in the short term and medium term that we could tap into? Not just on this issue, but some of the other things that people are requesting, right? I don't know what the parameters are around that, but like, we have community schools programs. We have lots of people in the community who want to support the schools. Is this one of those areas where we could ask for that? I don't know the answer to that. And so like, one challenge I would throw out is, are there creative solutions to this issue in the short term, right? Knowing that we're going to have long-term issues as well with declining enrollment and lack of affordability in this community. And, and I think the struggle that we have, and we've talked about this for years in this board, is, is how do you maintain programmatic diversity and rigor? Given the structural issues that are, that are facing this district? And it would be really nice to not have those structural issues and to have problems with growth. I would love to have those problems. And so I, like, not to turn it back on you all, but that's a question. Like, are there creative ways that we can fix this issue? Now, I don't, I mean, I don't know. It's not at all something I'm competent in, so.
Do you want to have an answer?
I don't answer that. But we have all sorts of school-community partnerships around all kinds of things. And so is there something out there that, that the community could come to us with a proposal and say, here's what this might look like, right? Is that a possibility?
Sure. I, I don't have additional staffing.
Right.
In fact, what made this work was that we had elementary special area staff that did not have full schedules. And with the reduction, the elementary, they really went to halftime positions. So the way in which we kept the people that we had, kept them whole, is that our students are receiving art or music, depending on their grade level and area, twice in the cycle. Which, by the way, has been a priority that they've asked for for a long time. That only seeing a student once every six-day cycle and throwing in the vacation periods and holidays. Means that their kids can go sometimes over two weeks before they see, they start a project. And it's, it's another fourteen, fifteen days before they see the project again based on. So, so where we have a problem that's been created, we also have people who liked the solution that we had with making full schedules. So again, it's just that yin and yang of all of our different pieces. And we, we can't do it all.
Yeah, and so we don't have any slack in the system this year, unlikely to have it next year, TBD based on building facilities use. And so, and absent any sort of state law, which one of the things the article talks about is how New York State hasn't even really supported this stuff. And so, I mean, it would be one thing if there was law passed that said you should have library specialists K-12 and we're going to fund it. New York State doesn't have unlimited funds either, so.
We've talked forever about in many areas how we do more than the minimum. And that's what made this school pretty neat. But the fear is that we're moving back towards the minimum because of forces that we don't control. You can't go below the minimum because that's ed law.
Yeah.
And so that makes small schools less unique, like ours. Our special ed, we give way more than the minimum services. My fear in special ed has always been, I've said this right along, if we start losing all that title money and the federal money, that moves more towards the minimum, not the other way. So I think to wrap this up, I think this is going to be a different kind of budget year than any of us have gone through. And I think to support Tori's voice here, I think we need to do a different process than we've done in the past as well. And we, we need to be a little more proactive about trying to solicit input and to the best of our ability. And if it comes, we'll, we'll take it under advisement. If it doesn't come, we'll have to do the best we can. Thing that is frustrating for me is trying to solicit input and receiving very little. But then massive amounts of criticism when we don't do what people want us to do, but they didn't tell us they wanted.
Consistent.
So that, that's frustrating for me because I want to, I want the community to have input. We strive for that. So we're going to have to do a little better outreach, I think, this year and, and then let, let things land where they land. And then work through the process. Hopefully the, the subcommittee can have some answers sooner than later so that, that could be part of that, that planning.
And I think we have been, I mean, I'm not saying we're perfect, but I think we've had been somewhat proactive on some stuff. I mean, like, so even the facilities study planning committee, we did not need to do that. We could have just said, this is a board decision. We're doing what we want to do. That's a proactive measure. I mean, you can make it, it's silly, but even the mascot thing, I had, I held three public hearings. Nobody came. I got plenty of not-nice emails about it, which is what you're describing. So we can't force people to show up or anything to that, but I think that we, I'm sure we can do better. And Tori, the knowledge you have would be helpful on being more proactive. I think we have tried, I think we've moved in that direction more than most board of education would. We do try to really involve the community on big decisions. And as you've said before, this is a, the facility study is a huge decision and so the biggest one we're ever going to make, so.
We had deliberative process for the turf field.
Yeah, for the turf field, we held public hearings.
Community voted on that.
Yeah.
So Mike, help me remember for our next committee meeting, we should talk about a, a sort of a public hearing for that sooner than later. So that we can, you know, get the information out there, see if we can get people to come in and give us some thoughts. Even if we only have four or five items identified for that particular hearing. I just want to remember to talk about that. So anything else on that before we move on to the facility planning committee? Thank you for the conversation. Thank you for coming. It's important for us.
No, thank you guys.
We appreciate it.
And please follow up if any of this has stimulated ideas.
And I am, yeah, I'm hoping to help bring brainstorm and creative decisions and creative solutions. There's a lot of different, plus multiple districts before, so it's your own sees, so that's another.
All right, we're going to move on to I M D, which is our district facility planning subcommittee update. Basically, it was an organizational meeting, went pretty well. We meet again next week. We're going to transfer some topics together. We had some principals coming in to address us with some of their items. Committee members wanted to see some, some building maps and floor plans and, and class sizes, things like that, you know, that kind of thing. So we're going to move in that direction. We want to identify our topics and we want to tour all the schools. Originally, we were going to do that coincide with the meeting, but then it was a good point, was brought up that, you know, I might take too much time all in one night. So we're planning a, a schedule where everyone on the committee can get to each building, get a tour, see what they look like, physical plants, how things are managed, how the space is utilized. So that as we talk through these things, these committee members, like some of us are familiar with it, but not everybody is. So they'll be able to see just what they look like and ask questions. Looking forward to the principals talking about their schedules and so that's all on tap for next week.
Congratulations also.
I'm just going to have, yeah, we're going to have a discussion.
They'd rather ask.
Talking about what the impacts of, of, you know, bus runs could be with different ways to use.
So sneak preview on that would be, we've run two bus runs for as long as I can remember, since I was a student here in the seventies. So. So, given our decline in enrollment, doesn't make sense to look at. Maybe one, maybe not. I don't know. We don't know. We've, we've done it for a long time to try to keep our younger students kind of separated from older students, but that's really not the norm in most schools. Is that accurate, Diane? Yeah. It does cause problems sometimes, but, so we'll get a good presentation from the bus department on that. Food for thought. That'll go on the subcommittee agenda, I'm sure. How busing will be impacted depending upon which model we go with. Unfortunately, we'll still have that one or two students that are always out on the fringes and that's the nature of our district. I remember years ago, I sat in a board meeting when I was just a teacher here and the big discussion was, why do I see, you know, someone spoke, why do I see all these buses, three or four kids on? Can't we just get like a small bus for that? And at the time, this is probably all that, at the time, running the small busing was not much more efficient than the big bus because the small bus was then not available for big bus transportation needs. So the savings was not like you would think. I don't know if that's still true or not, but sure Dave's got some insight on that.
We, we run our buses pretty tight. And so at any time DOT can show up and take a few buses off the road to, to do their inspection. They just show up in the morning and say, we want these buses. So, we run with only three buses extra, really. And so, if you have small buses and DOT shows up to take your big bus, you, you have to have an additional bus or two to cover the small buses because they can't just go into the operation for the day.
And you wouldn't know that, right? It seems to make sense, smaller buses, but in the overall arc of things, it's not really as many savings as would appear.
And they're not as inexpensive. Half a bus isn't half the cost. Right, so, and so at the end of the day, the cost savings on a smaller bus, even mileage wise.
Different parts, different oils.
Correct.
Different.
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
Learning different mechanic skills for different buses.
Anything else from the subcommittee folks want to add in?
No, I think, I think once we, once we have our next meeting, we have our agenda, we do our tours, and then we get the majority of the committee up to speed on some things. I think that's when we'll have our first public hearing and talk about that and, and so.
And we are going to meet at the different schools too. We're going to hold meetings.
Right. So, so that will give everybody a chance to come to meetings wherever we are.
Okay. Thank you everyone. New business. Do we have any new business, Diane?
I have no new business.
Okay. Superintendent report?
So I was speaking with Gina today. And so I want to talk a little bit publicly about how the board would like me to handle my role in the transition process. So Gina reached out to me today because Dale Brielle actually reached out to me and then I, I wasn't in the offices and meetings. So we spoke to Gina about getting some things in place for the thought exchange to begin the process. And so Gina came over and said, this is awkward, but how, but how involved do you want to be in your, in your replacement? And so, what she really meant was Dale has sent, for example, Dale has sent her a press release. So, do I want to evaluate the press release and put my two cents into it? And so, I know that was an important topic that we have a conversation around. My answer is yes, because until, until July 1st, when my replacement is seated, it still is a reflection of the district, whether it goes out through BOCs or goes out through me. It's still a reflection. We do sort of have a, we do have a flavor of how we do things. And I would like that, that type of item. But I also, if you say, no, this is a board decision, we're going to do it at the board level, I am perfectly fine with it. I do, I want to have the same awkward conversation that Gina and I had this afternoon with all of you of where, I'm not talking about being involved in the actual process with applications and who you're choosing and all, I'm not, not interested in that, just this, just this paperwork piece kind of getting us going. Do you want my hand in it or not in it? I'm, I'm okay.
It's still, it's still the job of our superintendent to run our schools, even though we're, the position is superintendent's position. You still should be involved in the things that make sense to be involved in. Dale has copied me on all this. I've set up a meeting with him next week to, to kind of cover these kind of items. And I'll be giving, I want to meet with him fairly regularly so I can give you regular reports of where we're at with all this.
Well, I think, you know, I think we trust your judgment too. If you feel awkward about it, it probably is awkward, right? So then at that point, you can defer to Mark.
Yes.
Of what? You know what I mean? Be like, well, I don't really feel comfortable with this. Here you go, Mark. Like, I think that's, and if you need to push it out to us.
Right, absolutely.
So we were, we were just reading about the press release and he'd like to use the press release to go out on Facebook. And I already said to Gina, it's a beautiful press release, but our families are not going to read it. Right? Because it's this long and it's just, it buries the lead, right? Like, let's, let's put the lead at the beginning.
So perhaps.
So I just think there are some things we could, but I also don't want to step on your toes. And you're like, no, this is between us and Dale. And I could, you tell me how you want me to handle it and I, I will walk that line.
Here's what I would say. In our media space, whether it's our Facebook or our Parents Square or whatever media we're using, I think you, you are empowered to make a bridge edition that's appropriate to come from us. And with the caveat that if you need further details, here's where I contact.
And I'll run that by you, Mark. And I'll send it back and I'll send it back to Dale.
It is a great process. It is lengthy though.
Yeah, it was lovely.
It's more for a journal than it is for.
For Parents Square.
You know more what our families need. As far as correspondence, what are they actually going to read? What are they actually?
It's also you, I think, Diane, you have, I don't, it's our job to, to choose the next, you know, superintendent. You know, you won't necessarily be part of that at all, but, but knowing what is in that position and what it takes to, that, that's where you're, you know, you bring the expertise to us. And, you know, we can't do it without that.
Okay, so I'm going to, for that type of thing, I will, I will step in, but I, I will send it back to you, Mark. Nothing will go without you being in the.
Feel free to contact Dale, but I'll, I'll discuss something next week as well. So he's on board with that comfortably. Yeah. We don't want to make this uncomfortable for you.
Well.
But we don't want to miss out on
Correct.
your, your wisdom on this either.
Right. And I want to be helpful, but I don't want to be in what is your business and not mine either, so.
Since we're talking about that, one of my questions, one, I thought we were going to start sometime in October. We're in October. So is Dale coming to speak with us next meeting? Do we have a sense?
I don't think he, no, no.
I thought, I, I don't remember why I had.
I had October as well.
No, the, the October thing was to start the process with this.
Thought exchange.
Thought exchange and this, lack of a better term, this advertisement for the position, that's the start.
Okay.
I'll have more for you after we meet with him next week.
Okay.
If you have things you want me to ask about, just send them to me. I'm happy to ask. But I want to meet with Dale regularly so I can keep you apprised of the process.
Do you want, you know, I mean, I'm not pushing myself into it, but do you need, do you want another person as vice chair to be there as well? Like two of us?
You're happy, happy to happen.
Does that, what is the radio thing?
I mean, you're vice president. I have no issue with that.
Well, it's more just that it's not on.
Oh, I know, I went so, I have so much.
Come on, you got a lot of free time.
Totally fine with it, Nancy.
What?
I'm fine with it.
Me too.
Yep.
You have a lot of institutional knowledge as well.
That was question Mark.
Thursday, 11:00 AM, AEC.
Is this Thursday, like tomorrow?
No, no, meet tomorrow. It's Thursday.
That's it. Thank you all for this uncomfortable conversation.
We'll, we'll try to do this more often.
It's not like we're firing, like.
Okay, let's go to our admin staff. Amy?
We had a great Fall Gaming Fun Festival open up on Monday. Students and their families joined us to share our fall themed meal, meet our staff, enjoy games. They made their own trail mix, learned about our curriculum, school programs, and many supportive organizations in our community. So I'd like to thank our team of middle school staff and our community organizations that came. The E C BOCs came, the San Francisco Police Department and the Youth Center, and of course, our 21st Century Team and Creative Schools Team. So, you know, it was a fun night. I'm also happy to share that we are starting our new middle school workshop series called Coffee with the Counselors. Starts on October 22nd. This is a four-part series designed to provide parents and guardians with information and resources to support their middle schoolers' wellbeing. Mrs. Jackson, Mrs. McHugh sent out a needs assessment, asking our families what topics they were most interested in. And based on the parent area and feedback, we have four sessions scheduled. So the first one is building students' self-confidence and self-esteem, October 22nd. January 23rd is managing student stress and anxiety. March 20th is navigating middle school friendships. And May 15th is internet safety. So we're really looking forward to partnering with our families in another way to support their children's success and to continue building strong, positive relationships between home and school. So thank you to Mrs. Jackson and Mrs. McHugh for taking initiative to start this program.
Okay, perfect. Brian?
Yeah, we had a pretty awesome performance at Petrova last, was it Friday of the 29th, Katie?
Monday.
Or Monday of the 29th. The Seagull Festival performed Monkey and Francine in the City of Tigers. Bloomingdale students came in for this performance. I didn't realize until after that the Seagull Festival is the premier opera and musical theater producing organization in the Adirondack region of upstate New York and the oldest summer vocal training program in the U.S. So we were able to get them. It was a fantastic performance. The kids loved it. It was loud. I think the kids might have been louder than the, than the performers, but it was, it was great. I think everybody enjoyed it. Just some kudos to the community, Harriet's Town Hall. I thought our evacuation drill went very well. You know, getting over 700 students and staff from the building to the town hall and back to Petrova in less than 30 minutes safely. And all accounted for is, is no easy feat. So, let's hope we never have to do it for real, but if we do, we'll be ready. And lastly, we had our first ever Petrova Family Friday meeting last Friday. Our building leadership team, or BLT, brainstormed some alternatives to our traditional Friday morning meeting that we've done once a month in the auditorium. And this is, it was a leak, but we decided to give the afternoon a try and meet in the cafeteria to make it more of a family atmosphere. I'd say it went pretty well. Not to say there aren't things that we are going to tweak before the next one. But we went over our positivity project element for this week. Being present and giving others our attention with an overall message that strong relationships grow when we're present, open-minded, and willing to listen. And then we had a special guest appearance of Big Red, who recognized a student, kindergarten student, obviously had no idea this was going to happen, with a certificate for already this year accomplishing a pretty lofty goal. So of course the kids loved that when they saw Big Red come in. Most of the staff didn't know that Big Red was coming. So, it was a, it was pretty successful, I would say. We hope to continue to do it in the cafeteria in the coming months. The problem is, when recess is done in the winter, getting the floor clean and dry and then getting 320 students and 60 staff in there before dismissal might be a challenge, but so far, so good.
Thank you, Brian. Katie?
Well, last Friday, we also had our second Big Red Assembly and Student of the Month award. So we had family come in for that. We have been focusing on the Big Red Matrix, which is our behavioral expectations. It's the acronym BIG RED. And so every month we focus on one letter and this month was letter I for integrity. So that's been really effective in fusing it with the positivity project because we use the same language and it's the same from school to school. So that's been really nice. Last Friday, we also had our 21st Century Movie Night and Country Line Dancing at the new turf field. Erica and I had a discussion after. We learned a lot from that event. And so we will be ready for our spring event with some changes. But I thought the feedback from the kids was awesome, but when they got onto a field, what do you think they wanted to do? So, it was still great to see a different event at the turf field other than athletics. And I thought it was really cool for the kids and they loved it. So we learned a little bit and we still had fun. This week is the start of field trip season. So today, second grade went to Blue Mountain Lake. Tomorrow, Bloomingdale K through two is all going to Bankers. And on Friday, the Bloomingdale Fire Department is doing its annual assembly and touch a truck in the parking lot. And that is for UPK in the second grade. So that should be a lot of fun.
Thank you. Leslie?
I think last time, that gave you a quick introduction to Next Ready classrooms. In your folders, you have two documents. Next Ready classroom has three shifts. It's Next Ready Writing, Next Ready Habits, and Next Ready Learning. Session one, rotations of curriculum are coming to a close where all teachers are onboarded to these three shifts. So our students are ready for whatever they choose to do next. Meaning, second grade to third grade, but also, you know, when they leave here, whatever path they choose. The culminating activity, staff is identifying where the strategies inherent in these shifts. Where they embed DEI and CRSE and also support our students annotating the attributes on the New York State Portrait of the Graduate. So on this other sheet you have here, kind of how the three are aligned. I love their Next Ready classrooms. You know, we're born before the Portrait of the Graduate was adopted. It shows, I think, that we're ahead of the curve and I think we have been, you know, right along in terms of, you know, the DEI work that began for, you know, before I, you know, even considered San Francisco. And on the back side, just a brief overview. I think, you know, when you hear from me in the future, we'll be talking about these Next Ready shifts and, you know, just a little foundation for you.
Can I just ask, I'm just curious, so it says, you know, research-based instructional strategies. What's an example of one of those, you know? Like an example of strategy you're using, is it a universal learning type approach or?
No, yes, of course that is. But at the same time, it is like student-centered, you know, teacher as facilitator, creating an environment and learning activities where students are questioning each other for deeper understanding. There's a bunch of different ways to do that, where students are in charge of their own learning to different degrees that they're ready for. There's a bunch of continuums that, that we played with today or, you know, this session that had to do with student agency. We talk a lot about, when you look at, there's these seven or six different continuums or seven. When you look at that, you could plan the most amazing lesson that is at the far end of this continuum and it would probably fall flat because our students don't know how to exercise that agency yet. And so, it's going to take some time to get there. We have to kind of build those training wheels and supports so that they're ready to take the reins.
Awesome, thanks.
Perfect. All right, next up, our student reps.
Okay, so we have picture day coming up, which is next week, I think. And so students got like the things that they buy, their pictures and homework. We had SATs today and yesterday, and then we had PSATs coming up. So students took those. And then we had a carbon monoxide leak. And so we, the second floor had to shelter in place. So I think it was down in the.
Whose fault was it?
Mr. Bennett's.
Right on his bus.
Wow.
Just backing up over him.
Well, okay, so it might be six degrees of separation, but it's just fun to give them a hard time. So our marine tech students were working on winterizing a boat. And the owner of the boat had allowed the motor, the electric part to die down. So they were charging it and they had to be close to the charger. So they started it inside to see, you know, turned it on to see if it was charged. And that set off the carbon monoxide. And whose boat was it? So therefore, it, it only makes sense that, because our carbon monoxide. But it was a great, it was a great practice, right? It was unexpected for all of us. We had a nice close-up. I won't click everything, but we did meet afterwards. The fire department, of course, came and we had some discussion like how to handle that in the future. And it was, it was a good trial run with everyone evacuated except for the people who set off the alarm because they could just move outside and continue their work. Everybody else on the second floor spent some time in the auditorium.
So everybody else on the second floor spent some time in the auditorium.
We have our play of football game on Halloween, so it's going to be like very fun. And then we also had one coming last week and everybody dressed up every day of the week. And then we had the whole train dance on Saturday last week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll lead off with the reports. I mentioned that I'm meeting with Dale next week. I also went to the line dancing movie night and thought it was spectacular. Kids were running around, having a great time. Many of the parents were bleacher bound, but they're still enjoying themselves. So I hope to see more kinds of uses like that on the new facility. Kudos for you folks for getting that kicked off. And I did not realize Bus and Boots was such a fun mommy.
It's got some scary parts, you know?
Nancy?
Well, I don't want to delay the agenda, but we have a D E I committee meeting tomorrow. It's an hour and a half because we're switching to meeting less often. It's supposed to be quarterly, but there are five meetings, five quarters. That's okay, it'll just get.
The first one never really counts.
It's true.
I think tomorrow night will be shorter and it just gets us off the ground. I didn't want to just get off the ground and then wait.
Right.
For another quarter, so you're right.
I understood it that way as well. So it's good to get it back because we haven't had a meeting yet this year. So just get, get back into the swing of things. That's about all that I have to say.
Justin?
Just thanks to the Petrova staff, the kindergarten folks who took the kids to the potato farm and the cooked potatoes for about two weeks now. Running out of ideas, yeah. Yeah, so running out of ideas, if you got any more. And Suzanne wanted me to share, she's been going to the future superintendent's training, not because she's applying for the job, she may be very clear she said that, but that she, in talking to many of her colleagues there who are attending the training do the similar rules she does, wanted to just, it's kind of like a humble brag for our board, thank our board for being, our board superintendent for being supportive of staff. And she had her thoughts of course, stories from her colleagues there about how they don't feel supported from their boards. And so she wanted me to make sure I said thank you too. So I'm doing that. Thank you from Suzanne.
Joe?
Nothing.
Zach?
Nothing to report.
Tori?
Nothing.
And Mike had to lead for another meeting. Okay, even though it says anticipate executive session, we do not need an executive session, Diane. So if I get a motion for adjourned? Second?
Joe.
Hold a favor?
Hi.
I propose, we are adjourned.
So you're, you're buying copies? So you know, we, we do ours through SimQuest. How many copies do you need? We do ours through SimQuest. It's not a lease agreement, but it covers multiple, covers service. Like that's the remote, that's.